Good evening and welcome to December 15, 2022 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on cable two. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by our invocation given by Vice Chair Calvert-Hayes?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow ahead in prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over these proceedings tonight and that you grant us wisdom as we make decisions affecting the life of our young people and school employees. We ask, Lord, for your guidance as we attempt to do what we believe is best for all our students. Finally, Lord, we ask you for your blessings upon everyone involved in the Forsyth County education process, including our teachers, administrators, parents, and most of all, the students, as they are our future. Amen.
Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. First, Andy Kraft will recognize schools that exceeded growth in all subgroups.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited to bring out this group of school leaders because what they've accomplished is really unique. Every year we have schools that exceed expected growth, but the list of schools that exceed expected growth for every subgroup within their school is small, and it's the right thing to do to recognize these schools. So we have some principals and some members of their staff here tonight, and we're going to recognize them for accomplishing that huge task. So first one is Old Richmond Elementary School, Principal Brian Brookshire.
Are there members of the Old Richmond staff here this evening?
Okay. All right. So next is Anna Balzer from Lewisville Elementary. And are there any staff members here from Lewisville tonight? Yeah, come on, stand up, guys. We're proud of your work. Well done. Now, the next is the only middle school on this list. I want to emphasize there's only one middle school that accomplished this, and that is Kernersville Middle School, Lisa Duggins. Are there members of the Kernersville staff here? I think there are. Stand up, guys. Stand up. Yep. I like that Lisa told me she really wanted her staff up here on the stage instead of her. You all deserve the credit. Well done. Well done. The next one is Gibson Elementary. Cynthia Russell is the principal there.
And are there members of the Gibsonville Elementary School here tonight as well?
Yay!
Are they? There you go. Stand up. Well done. Every principal will tell you it is their staff who accomplishes this work. The last is Cook Elementary. And tonight for Cook Elementary, Brooke Hancock, the School Improvement Team Chair, and David Johnson, the Dean of Students, are here.
It's so amazing to be a part of a group of people who are dedicated to providing students with a quality education. I think that we have worked extremely well as a team together. I think that we've grown to know each other. I certainly have learned a tremendous amount from my colleagues, and so I'm super excited to have been a part of this group.
It has been one of the most important things in my life. It really has. We've made some changes that help people. We've made some differences. It was very important. At the time and today, it's still really important. It's not going to change.
It's been a great, great experience.
Thank you.
I've met so many wonderful, wonderful people.
That's just so great. Next is our outgoing Board of Education member recognition.
I've met devoted teachers. I've met moms and dads that have helped me in my decisions on so many different things.
So I am going to jump in at this time and just want to, we have a special video, but
But most of all, I've fallen in love with the kids.
this is our last official board meeting with our board as we see it this evening.
That's what it's all about. The kids and what we can do to better the kids.
And so we wanted to start with a video, and then I'm going to share a few words after
And it's been a life changer for me.
the video.
It's really been a life changer.
It's been an honor to serve on the school board. I don't know many people who get this opportunity from their fellow citizens to say, hey, can you go and do what you think's best for our children? And that's really and truly an honor. I mean, it's very humbling, and it has grown me as an individual, and I could say I am better today than I was when I took office.
If the shutdown during COVID taught us anything, it's that the public school system is the linchpin to our society working well. It's been a huge honor. Getting the opportunity has kind of led me to this position of where you feel incredibly responsible for public education in our community. I never thought of myself as the one to champion that. I'm still growing into it, but I can't think of a better way to spend my time.
It has been a wonderful, wonderful past four years. I have been honored to work with each and every board member, to get to know them. Each of them contribute to the board. We are one of nine, so we have to work together to move forward with the great work that our superintendent has put in place. But once again, it has been the honor, absolute honor of my life.
It's been really one of the most important things I've ever done with my life. I have loved being on the board. I have been so blown away and impressed by the good, hard work being done by our staff, by our teachers, by all these people who love children and care about them. Our schools are full of the best people you will ever meet, and I could not be more grateful to them and for their commitment to the future.
Whenever I was a classroom teacher, I thought education was just up to us in the school. But education is everyone in the whole community's business, and it's been a real honor and a privilege to be able to do that and be a part of that work.
Service to my community, which is so important to me. When I found the opportunity to come home to give back, I thought that it was something that I should do and something that, you know, this community raised me to do, to come back home and give back. My term here made history. I was the first African American to chair the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education, and so for that, I'm just so very grateful and thankful to this community for the opportunity to serve.
Before we wrap that up, that was incredible video. I mean, just to hear all of your comments about serving, it's been a, I've been here for two years of your four, and it's been an incredible two years for me. I mean, it has not gone without challenges, as you all know, but I could always count on every one of you to come here and vote your heart and vote your mind and vote what you thought was right for kids. And so I just wanted to share a few highlights with Kevin. I mean, just a few things that you all in the last four years, and this is not even touching the surface, of some of the decisions that you've made for our district. And so Kevin, I mean, you did. We had a historic closure, which we will never repeat again, so.
We hope.
We're never repeating it. Not while I'm here. I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. No. Reopening again, remote learning plans, our first virtual academy opening in our district, and the implementation of a cares team. All that was this board. Next, you opened Lewisville Middle. You purchased land for the new Ashley and Brunson sites. Next, you did raises for drivers, other classified employees, and began the compensation committee that's just going to continue, making sure that we have the most competitive wages for our employees moving forward. Last year, you gave tons of retention bonuses. We've given another one this year, and hopefully tonight we give another one, but you've put our employees and their compensation at the forefront of your decisions. We've adopted a new code of character conduct and support, and we're moving in a new direction around culture and climate, and so your support around that was incredible. New security measures. We actually have a team. Look at this picture. You all helped us form a safety and security team district-wide, started I love you guys, have improved safety on all of our campuses. Next, this year, even amidst some challenges, 75% of our students either met or exceeded growth. We're working toward 100%, but we are, you know, even amidst challenges last year with staffing and absences, and we still had some great, great progress. $25 million. You heard last week, just in 24 months, our district has brought in $25 million in grant dollars. We've joined groups like Bridges Collaborative, Council of Great City Schools, and we're just continuing to be learners, and our board has supported those efforts. So those that are outgoing, all of that, there'll be three of you continuing on this journey toward excellence for Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools and all of our students. But to those that will be not returning, thank you all so much. We wish you the very best. And again, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve alongside you in this incredible work. I can't think of anything more important, and you've chosen to give up so much time to support our kids, so thank you. So I was wondering if our outgoing board members would like to say something. Elizabeth, would you like to share some words?
When I got elected in 2006, I thought I knew something about how to improve schools. And what I learned is that there was so much I had no idea about, and that while we were educating children, you were always educating me. And the people in this district are phenomenal. Nobody can imagine how good the people who work in this district are at every single level, and I applaud you and I thank you, and I am so grateful that you work here for us.
Marilyn?
I would echo what Elizabeth said, and there are so many facets that if any part of this wheel that's called education isn't there, the bus drivers, the mechanics, the everyone, if anybody in the wheel is not there, then children's education is not optimal. And this district has some wonderful, wonderful folks that serve our children, serve our community, and serve our families. And I've been humbled to be able to serve in this capacity and with this board and other boards, people who are passionate about children, about this district, giving the children the best education that we can, and try with all the resources and whatever we have to be optimal in all that we do. And I want to thank these board members for their passion and for them getting their hands in the dirt, and I appreciate, and I've been humbled to serve this district for probably way too long, but it's been an honor and a privilege, and thank you.
Lyda?
I've been on the board now for seven years. That's a long time, and I saw a lot of changes, but what I've really seen is the way our teachers, administrators have all grouped together. We've been through a pandemic. We've been through a lot of things that we couldn't even imagine, and look at us today. We come out, I'll start crying, we come out, and it's been wonderful. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Andy?
Don't forget, we also put together an equity policy, which was really hard.
That should have been a plus.
I agree, and we put some restorative justice practices, but it's just beginning. The next board, I wish you all the luck in the world, because this is a hard job. I'm not going to say it's easy. It's very hard, but stick with it. It's worth it. It's worth every minute of it, and every student is too.
Thank you. Shay?
Thank you, Chairwoman Kaplan. First, I would just really like to thank God and this community for such a high level of service. Woodrow Wilson said that service is one of the greatest religions you can practice, and that helped me to see how almost surreal service is. A lot of us as human beings don't get that opportunity to serve, and when you are able to serve at this level, it is such a privilege. It's an honor, and it has been also very humbling to be a part of a board that made history on so many levels. I would just like to, right now, thank Elizabeth, Marilyn. I want to thank Alex. I want to thank Deanna. I want to thank Lyda, Andy, Leah, and Dana, and I'm saying their first names instead of board member because I truly believe we are forever connected as people. We have gone through a lot. Frederick Douglass said, "Without struggle, there is no progress." And so we've done so much because of the struggles that you have witnessed, that you've seen, and some that you have not seen. But it has made me personally a better Shay Woodbury. So I thank Tricia McManus for accepting the challenge to lead our district at an unsure time. I thank all of the staff of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools at the district level, but I would be remiss if I did not say from the bottom of my heart, I thank all of the educators of Winston-Salem Forsyth County School for doing the work that sustains our community and our country. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Dana?
The girl on the end goes last, Shay. Right, so this is just, I mean, it's really and truly, I think we've all said that, and what an honor it is for members of your community to put you in this position with our most valuable treasure in a community, and that's your children. And so as others have said, we have amazing staff here, from our teachers, all of our classified, and though we don't get to work as hand-in-hand, we know some schools because our kids went there or they're closer to us, but, you know, we also probably have a longer and a stronger relationship with district staff. And so we have some amazing people that help us all the time. We could never, we couldn't make it a day without Lisa, or Brent, or Dion, Kevin. There's just so many people that we interact with all the time. There was no way we could have gotten through a 2016 bond, and that was a huge accomplishment that another board made, but we're kind of gaining the benefits of that, and we could have never put that together without someone like Daryl Walker. And so we have some great people that lead this district so well. And as Shay said, you know, we have bonded, we have really forged friendships, even when we completely disagree and we vote opposite of one another. But that's okay, because we know that everyone's voting their conscience on what they think is right. So for me, it's been an honor. It's very humbling, I think, when you serve in public office, or it should be. And so for all those who have liked votes that I have made and voted for me, that's great. But for all of those who didn't like some of my votes or never bubbled me in on the ballot, that's great, too, because, you know, with self-reflection, you hear those, that criticism or what someone says, and you grow from it. So, you know, I can say eight years later, I'm a much better human being and servant than I was when I was first elected. So for that, I'm grateful. I also feel like when we sit here, we also know that there's a lot of things that go on at home, so our families sacrifice a lot, especially if you have sat here when you have kids. And so you know that you have walked out of middle school basketball games or cross-country track, you know, meets, and you think that, you know, they make it across the line, and you hope you do that for the greater good. And so for those who, the three, Alex and Deanna and Leah, that will continue, and also with other board members, and I see some of them that will be in the room, you know, I think the best thing I can do and honestly say that I will continue to pray for the board, for our staff, for our teachers, and our students, and our families every single day like I have done for the past eight years. Thank you.
Thank you all. Just want to give you all another round of applause. It's hard to follow that. Gosh, it's been such an honor. Do any other board members, would anybody else like to comment?
Okay. Thank you all so much. At this time, we're going to hear public comments on the agenda items only. The instructions were on the sheet as you signed up. Remember to be kind and considerate. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. First, we have Val Young.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent McManus. How do you show someone that you appreciate them? You can write them a nice note, which is a dying art. You can say thank you. You can give them a small gift, or you can do something tangible like the retention bonus. I want to acknowledge the fact that you, as a board, have always wanted to show our education team that you value them, and that you understand that we cannot do anything without our TAs, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, our maintenance, all our classified staff, all our support staff, and our certified staff. On this week, as we celebrate American Education Week, we'd like to thank you in advance for approving the retention bonus. My mom always told me, if you want something, you got to put it out there in the world. So I'm putting it out there in the world. Thank you for giving the same bonus to everyone. It levels the field for all our staff, because you, as well as I know, that when you feel like you're valued, when you put something to it, like a retention bonus that everybody's getting, it makes everybody feel like we are a team. For the board that is cycling off, I want to thank you from LCAE for always having a listening ear. No, we haven't always agreed, but we were mature enough to disagree agreeable lead. So it's always been an open channel there, and I appreciate that. For the three of you, Ms. Crowley, Ms. Kaplan, and Mr. Bohannon, the journey continues, and we're going to be with you, because, like I said, I want this school district to be the best in North Carolina, and one day we're going to get there, but we want to tell all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Wise?
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm a teacher at Haynes Magnet School, a science teacher for the last decade or so, and during that time, I've had the opportunity to teach about climate change a lot. And I felt from the very beginning I had to put my money where my mouth is, and it has changed my lifestyle dramatically, much to my wife's sadness at times. But at the same time, I go to a school where unfortunately it's a very old school, and there's a gross waste of energy, the way we use it. And some of it's just some things we can't do about it, but a lot of it is things we can do about it. In the classrooms where air conditioning and light and heat are just being run all the time, even when no one's there, the recycling that's being just thrown away in the trash because of the way that the system works, the styrofoam trays in the cafeteria that are not compostable, and just being filling up our landfills. It makes us look to the students like we either don't believe in the climate change that we're teaching or that we just don't care, one or the other. We've got a resolution tonight that I'm so excited about to look at bringing environmental sustainability as part of our school system, and it's the right direction. We can empower the students. We can model sustainability amongst ourselves, and hopefully we can even motivate staff to care, because that's going to be a big key. We are so fortunate in Winston to have the Piedmont Environmental Alliance here in the fact that they can assist us, guide us, be partners with us, and to bring the community together with this. They motivated me a year ago to start an after-school program that we call Eco Warriors, and it's been very popular, and we've had loads of kids being involved with this, where they set personal goals on how they can personally change, so they don't look hypocritical, where they're in charge of our recycling and our composting, they're in charge of cleanups, they're there to make sure that we're reducing our plastic usage, and they're creating websites for their students, TikToks, videos to communicate with each other so that they can bring their student community along with us. We also have a lot of fun. We eat sustainable foods. I would love to bring you some of the insects that we eat so that you can taste them. We've eaten seaweed and kale muffins and tofu and veggie burgers and all sorts of interesting things to think about, alternative ways of our food production. They are becoming, they're beginning to see the way that they can be part of the change, and I think this resolution hopefully will bring the school system along to be part of the change also. So I thank you in advance for bringing this up before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Phoenix Pope?
I'm an eighth grader at the Haynes Magnet School. In seventh grade, I was Mr. Wise's student, and I'm also in his environmental club, Eco Warriors. Picture a science teacher teaching about the dangers of addiction but comes to school every day smelling of alcohol. Picture a PE teacher who is a they're, they're there to make sure that we're reducing our plastic usage, and, and they're creating websites for their students, TikToks, videos to communicate with each other, so that they can bring their student community along with us. We also have a lot of fun, we eat sustainable foods. I would love to bring you some of the insects that we eat, so that you can taste them. We've eaten seaweed, and kale muffins, and tofu, and veggie burgers, and all sorts of interesting things to think about, alternative ways of, of our food production. They're, they are become, they're beginning to see the way that they can be part of the change, and, and I think this resolution, hopefully, will bring the school system along to be part of the change also. So, I thank you in advance for bringing this up before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Phoenix Pope?
My name is Phoenix Pope. I'm an eighth grader at the Haynes Magnet School. In seventh grade, I was Mr. Wise's student, and I'm also in his environmental club, Eco Warriors. Picture a science teacher, teaching about the dangers of addiction, but comes to school every day smelling of alcohol. Picture a PE teacher, who is a hundred pounds overweight, eating fast food in front of the students every day. Picture an English teacher, who writes grammatically incorrect emails home to the parents every day. Now picture a school that teaches about climate change and global warming, but has energy-efficient buildings, gas-guzzling buses, cafeterias serving on non-recyclable trays, no consistent recycling program, in fact, absolutely no visible attempt to show a concern for global warming every day. All parents know that what they do makes much more of an impact on their children than what they say. We need, you need to start making your actions match your teaching. This resolution will be a big step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was great. Jenny Easter?
Good evening. I really wanted to come tonight to express my excitement about the Environmental Sustainability Resolution that you'll be voting for, or voting on. Through the pandemic, I found the art of gardening, and some of you that I'm friends with on Facebook know that. I post pictures all the time. It gave me peace, and as an educator, I always love learning. And if any of you are also gardeners, you know that there are many fails along the way to finding what works and what doesn't, which is also like teaching. Even when you think you have found all the research possible, and dedicated all the practice in the world to growing a tomato plant, it still finds a way to not go the right way. But, that's growth mindset, which is what we teach our kids every day. With this new passion, I set out to find a way to fit it into our curriculum and state standards in my classroom last year. As you know, I teach kindergarten, so they love learning all of the fun things about bugs, and plants, and everything. I know the slides on the PowerPoint tonight are just the tip of the iceberg of ideas, but it is absolutely possible to fit aspects of sustainability in all the subject areas, in all the grades possible. Mrs. McManus came and visited my classroom last year, and she saw all of the wonderful things that we had accomplished, and recommended books to read, which my kids loved. Wanda's Roses was their favorite. We learned worm composting, growing sprouts, how to plan and diagram, how to fit our garden into our natural area. My personal garden is about 200 feet from my house, so I have had to get crafty with solar energy. So, that is also another passion I'm learning about. So, I'm really encouraged by this resolution. As I was researching more ideas for this year's plan with my kids, I came across this quote, "No matter what age the student is, teaching them about sustainability, helping them critically think about the subject, and encouraging them to play an active role in sustainability in their community, will set them on the great path for the rest of their lives." This is an amazing opportunity to grow green leaders in our schools, and make connections with companies and businesses around our area. That could be solar or tech companies, landscaping businesses, building businesses, and also hopefully provide for the food insecurities in our community, because we know that is a struggle as well. So, I hope that you vote yes for this, and further it along in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Antonazi?
Well, first, a big thank you to all the candidates that ran for school board this cycle. Congratulations to those that won, and a big thank you to those that served. My public comments are in regards to action item C. It's also environment, but in this case, environmental contamination. The 2016 bond promised the Brunson community they would have a new facility today. Rather than celebrating a new school bustling with children, construction was put on hold with the purchase of a hazardous waste site, rather than a site compatible with the school. This is a self-inflicted wound, since there was no logic behind trading the current Brunson site for Brownfield site. I would like to take a moment here to thank the employees of Chue's Bank, who came out to Brunson Elementary just last week to landscape paint and repair a facility that had exceeded its lifespan. The Chue's bankers understand the value of the current Brunson Elementary, and they realize that the short-term solution is to fix up a crumbling school themselves, when the school district failed to maintain the property. Bankers likely also realize the long-term solution to Brunson dilemma. As investors and critical, and as a critical facet to any local property development, they realize the current site of Brunson Elementary is one of the most desired tracts of land in the county, nestled between West End and Buena Vista, across the street from Haynes Park, nearby shopping, hospitals, and Triad's largest YMCA complex. It's walking distance to Reynolds Auditorium, and one day, Reynolds Stadium. I've heard board members state that the current Brunson site is not an option due to the risk of flooding, but there was an engineering solution proposed. In fact, the 2016 bond paid for these same strategies to minimize flood risk for the unfinished Reynolds Stadium, such as enhanced storm water systems, retaining walls, and land regrading. So, again, I beg you to consider that nine out of nine soil gas tests on the Brownfield site demonstrate a complex hazardous contamination incompatible with the school. Please consider this tonight before approving a $1.7 million contract to demolish a dilapidated coal-fired industrial plant loaded with asbestos, and who knows what else. You have alternatives to this site. Now is the time to consider them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Menendez-Roe?
Good evening, board members. My name is Jessica, and I work for Piedmont Environmental Alliance. I first want to say thank you so much to the board members that have already voted yes, to put this resolution for environmental sustainability forward to the whole board. And thank you to those board members that have helped work and pushed this through. I just want to make two statements, one a practical, and one a slightly personal statement. First, I really believe in this resolution, because honestly, there are a lot of resources that Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools deserve to have, that are coming from federal and state funding. There is federal funding available for electric school buses, and we want our school district to have that resource. So, I encourage you to please vote yes on this resolution. A second, more personal statement, is I one day hope to be a mom, and I would love my kids to come into Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, knowing that the school board and the school system has prioritized environmental sustainability, and put, said yes to their future. So, that is all. But, thank you so much, and we really appreciate you considering this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Kristi Robinson?
Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus, and board members, I wanted to sincerely thank you for your service to our district and our children. Thank you so much. My name is Kristi Robinson. I'm a parent of young children. My oldest is a fifth grader here today. I'm a teacher in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools at Jefferson Elementary. I'm PTA president, and I'm a member of Piedmont Environmental Alliance. I'm so incredibly grateful for this resolution of environmental sustainability that's up for vote this evening. I was involved in the Spies composting program, and saw how helpful it was for our environment, and also for the staff and the students. I'm so excited to see this important programming, program replicated in other schools. I'm so proud to be part of a school district with real vision and great values, to be part of a district where departments can work together for the betterment, betterment of our children's future, and for our world. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for prioritizing and recognizing the vast improvement, the vast importance of sustainability. I look forward to seeing the wide-reaching impacts of this landmark resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Sonnen-Lee?
Hi, my name is Katie Sonnen-Lee. As you know, I'm a parent in the district, and also a community advocate. First, I just wanted to echo what a lot of you said about the incredible staff in this school district, and how much they've done to make your jobs sometimes harder, probably, but a lot of times easier, and how much we appreciate them, and as a parent, as a community advocate, in so many ways. I also wanted to touch briefly on the school improvement plans. Let's really find a way to bring those to life, because a lot of times, there's something that gets sent home. I got the letter about the school improvement plan. It gets sent home once a year, and then not much ever happens with it. So, let's really bring those to life, so we can, and report back to the community on what the, what's happening with that, what's, what bringing to the community. I also want to echo everybody here that supported environmental sustainability. My kids are at Spies, and it was super powerful to see them learn more about composting, how they could have an impact, how they could really make a difference in their school, because when you're in elementary school, you don't have a lot of control over much in your life. But they came home, like, demanding that we compost everything. We have a compost pile now. It was really cool. But, I mainly wanted to talk about two things. One, the custodial contract, and I wanted to hear more about, hopefully from you all, what are we doing for current staff? Does that mean that current staff is getting laid off? I hope not. I mentioned Spies earlier, but Mr. Copley is our lead custodian, and he is like the superheroist of superheroes. He is amazing, and his staff, the rest of the custodians are amazing, and they really do everything. I mean, everything. So, I want to make sure we're taking care of our staff that we already have, and that we aren't doing anything that would harm them, or take away their benefits, or anything that they're used to having, including good pay. I noticed on page 21 of the contract, it says that time and a half would be $30 an hour for any custodial projects. I wanted to make sure, is that what we're currently paying our custodial staff, is $30 an hour for time and a half? Second, looking at security, that's on the agenda. When you look at the data about what really improves school safety, decreases fights, which I know the shootings get the main news, but there's fights every single day in almost every middle school and high school in our district, right? But if you look at what really improves school safety, school climate prevents fighting, improves student success, it's very little data that suggests it's SROs. There's a lot of data that suggests it's intensive mentoring programs, it's trauma-informed practices, like what are put into place with the new code of conduct, although more, there's more to that. It's holistic approaches to making sure children are well in every way, including mental health, physical health, all the things that we, we know we just need to put in place. So, let's be proactive, and really stop the violence and fighting before it even happens, before the SROs are needed. Let's be really holistic, and if you have read about Leandro case, there's a lot of support in that for these sorts of programs. So, let's make sure we, we support that as well. And then the last thing on my note says, "All the money for all the educators." So, thank you for giving the bonuses. Hopefully, we do more.
Thank you. Melissa Paulson?
Good evening. Thank you all so much for your service, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. I came out tonight to voice my support for the resolution for environmental sustainability, as many people did tonight. I really, it was just the reason to come out, and I was really inspired by my children. They, I'm a parent of elementary school's children in the district, and they just started a new school this year. And the first thing they did, the first week of school, is they started a cleanup club at recess. And they got a plastic bag, and went around the playground, and picked up trash, and then they got all their friends to do it, and then the whole class was doing it. And this lasted for several weeks. It was, it was really impressive. So, if my children can start their first week at a new school, a cleanup club, I figured I could come out here and tell you how important this is, to vote for. Every investment that we make in the environment is an investment in our children. So, please go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cornelia Barr?
Good evening. I'm Cornelia Barr. I'm speaking on the environmental resolution, and, whoops, and I'm also part of the team at Piedmont Environmental Alliance, also the founder of the Gateway Nature Preserve, and I'm a certified environmental educator in the state of North Carolina. First of all, maybe you've noticed how many green shirts there are here? Everybody wearing green is supporting the Environmental Sustainability Resolution. So, I think you see how important this is for the community. But, from my perspective as an environmental educator, the Sustainability Resolution will bring new energy to current sustainability and nature programs in the individual schools that already exist as model programs. For example, Piedmont Environmental Alliance offers environmental education programs that we are ready to expand system-wide. Another resource the sys- the system can draw on is rich natural resources we have in the city and county, such as Gateway Nature Preserve, and city parks like Quarry Park and Pathabra Park. With this resolution, the school system can better prioritize environmental curriculum, field trips, and environmental education training for teachers. And working at the system level, we will have access to federal funding that can remove barriers to implementation in all schools. On a small but significant level, is funding for field trips for all children. In low-resource schools, these options aren't available for kids. And I want to close with a quote from the Senegalese forestry engineer, Baba Dioum, "In the end, we will conserve only what we love. We will love only what we understand, and we will understand only what we are taught." As Baba Dioum understands, facing the environmental challenges that lie ahead begin with teaching our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. And I have one slide, since I already kind of did an update this evening, and that is, this is our last meeting before our Thanksgiving. So, I just, we all have so much to be thankful for, and I wanted to just tell everyone, happy Thanksgiving, all of our staff, families, students, and all of you. So, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. First, John Sullivan, our district athletic director, will give us a middle school sports update.
Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, members of the board, thank you for having us this evening. Alexis McCoy, Assistant Athletic Director, and I are here to give a update on our middle school athletics. So, let me give you a little bit of history to refresh our memories on things. As you may remember, middle schools did not have athletics for a year and a half. Coming out of that, Alexis and I took over middle school sports for the district. So, we spent that first year, and our goal was to just review and assess, and let the kids re-acclimate, and ease back into middle school sports. So, we spent that year just seeing how things go, asking a lot of questions. We, we made some minor changes, but nothing drastic. But, we're happy to report that this year, our numbers are, were plus five in the number of athletic teams that we have fielded over the year at all of our middle school sports. So, we are making progress. We have a way to go, we know that. We're working on it, and we'll go over some initiatives and things we have. But, our first slide, we want to talk about just briefly, is we did a comparison with the five largest districts just like ours, and what sports are offered at all these districts. And as you can see, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, we offer 14 sports, as opposed to 10, 11, 12, 13. So, we're doing, we feel like we're, our offerings to our students are, are good and broad, but we feel like there's some things, I know there's one big one missing on here, that we don't, compared to the other ones. We hear about it all the time, and it's one of the things we want to look at down the road. So, this year, we did, we did add one new initiative program. We've partnered with the First Tee, which is a PGA program in golf, okay? And the, and listed are their goals. This is from their website. They do a lot of teaching other than the game of golf, but the nice thing about this is you don't need to have equipment, you don't need to have played the sport. All our schools need to do is get the kids to two different sites, and they will teach the game. And they will teach these things along the way, resolving conflicts, set it, set up step-by-step goals, planning for the future. So, it's been really good for our schools. It takes away that competitive, some of our schools are very competitive in golf, and they can still schedule amongst themselves and do that, but this is the opportunity for kids to learn the game, and maybe something they can do for the rest of their life. We are also in conversation with the USTA and the Winston-Salem Open folks to begin a similar program in the spring for tennis. Again, we would have our competitive side to this, but we would also have an opportunity, wouldn't need rackets. All we got to do is get them to the location, and they will teach the sport to the kids. So, we're excited about those, and where those are headed, and hopefully, this is something we can grow, and reach out, and do some other things with other people in other schools. other people in other sports. In the future, we know we need to do a survey of our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders to see what sports they, and athletic teams, they might have an interest in as they enter into middle school. And we'll also survey the seventh and eighth graders to see if there's something they might do as well. But we want to capture this group first because they're our future middle schoolers. You know, ask them about things like wrestling, football, and lacrosse and some of the things that they offer in the high schools that they don't offer to middle schools. We know we need to do a middle school facilities assessment. Some of our schools, you know, we have, it's basically half and half. Some have facilities and play games on, we're talking outdoor mostly because everyone has gyms. They can play contests onsite, but there are some that do not and we need to assess that. Then we need to create a middle school facilities upgrade and additions plan, working with our folks in, you know, with Darryl Walker and our folks in operations to see the feasibility of additions and on-campus so that we can reduce our travel because the next, one of the next things is transportation, which is also, as we grow sports, we're going to need to grow the transportation fleet or get creative on how we get kids to locations or to our visiting locations. So one of the things we talked about is also developing clinics and workshops for our middle school coaches. You know, have our high school coaches coach the middle school coaches so we can provide better programming for our kids at the middle school so they're better equipped when they get to the high school. So that's one of the things we want to work on as we move to the future. So thank you and I appreciate your time. Questions?
Board member Woodbury?
The first question I have is about the Olympic Sports Day that we did with the middle school students, I think, last year and is there opportunity to do that again? It seemed like it was fairly successful based on the footage we saw through the communications team.
So yeah, we received, just real quick, we had an Olympic Sports Day where we invited our middle schools to bring the kids to Deaton Thompson where they, we could use the gym and the field and they introduced them to Olympic sports. It was very well received. And yes, we have, what we are doing now is we're working with our PE programming, Karen Garman, to make, to see if we can intertwine this into our PE programs so we don't have to pull kids out and make it a field trip. So yes, we are trying to grow that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is about the professional development for coaches. So I think it's a good idea to have high school coaches coach the middle school coaches, but how do we provide professional development for the high school coaches so that they are models of great coaching?
Thank you, yes. Last spring, we started a partnership with a group called Positive Coaching Alliance. So we, the first training was for athletic directors and principals so we could get buy-in from them. And then on Halloween, we had a professional development day for all of our head coaches with PCA to work around growth and development and the idea of basically teaching more than just the sport and the skill. My idea of the middle school thing is to teach them the sport and the skill. We also invited our middle school head coaches as well to our program and we're going to continue this as we go. And the idea is hopefully we can get to the point where we're inviting coaches and students to create a positive culture within all of our athletics.
Okay. And as I transition to my last question, I will say that peer pressure is, you know, ideal when it's positive. And I would tell you that board member Crowley has been a very active proponent of making sure we have sports that truly impact our children and families in a positive way. And I appreciate her advocacy because it really inspired me to think more, you know, specifically about how are our sports in Winston-Salem South County Schools affecting the lives of our children? And I think we definitely need to be more intentional around, you know, having at least yearly an update on athletics and the impact that it's having on our children and families so that we know that great things and opportunities are happening for our students. So the last piece, I have had parents talk about competitive cheering. And I noticed that that wasn't a part, of course, of middle school sports, but as we get into high school sports, the cheering piece is, you know, very, you know, I think just as important as the other high school sports. And I think parents want to kind of hear more about how we are actively engaged in making sure we support cheering as a sport and to bring back maybe some of the local competitiveness around cheering in our school district.
So that is, that is on our list of things to review for our high schools and that we are looking into the possibility of creating some, something for our, like our county basketball tournaments, incorporate that within there or having something separate. So yes, it is on our radar. Yes.
I have grandchildren that do a lot of sports and they're doing a whole lot out at the rise. And I look, the only thing is, I feel like so many of our kids are being left out because the rise is out by Bermuda Rhine. And a lot of those kids don't have transportation to be able to get out and play basketball, all the different sports. And that seems to be the hot place right now for these young kids to be is out at the rise. They have coaches out there that are coming and recruiting and different things are going on, but I also look at the kids that are completely left out because of the transportation. And I wondered if there's any way our public school can get involved in anything like that. I mean, you go out to the rise and it is, it's packed. I mean, it's just kids from all over High Point, all the neighboring places. But it does make me wonder about these kids that want to be a part but have no way of being able to get out and get involved. And I don't know if that's anything we can do with our public schools, but I do think just from going out and seeing what is happening, that that is something that is really, really needed. And I don't know if we've looked into anything about that. I mean, I'm sure you know a lot about it, much more than I do, but I know I spend every Saturday, every, every time you turn around, I'm out there at that rise. But I just think that a lot of our kids are being left out because of the distance and because of the transportation. And I know it's not a school-supported program, but I do, it does make me worry about the kids that aren't getting to have a chance at this because they have professional coaches out there. I mean, it's, it's the real deal. I don't know if any of y'all have been out to that rise or not, but I think everybody and their brothers.
We'd love to have one in Forsyth County. Maybe it was our own, but yes.
Yeah, I agree. I just see it as being very thriving, but I also see it as being not so good on kids that don't have the opportunity or the transportation to be a part of.
We can certainly look into if there's ability to partner with them, but they are in Davie County, so I don't know how it plays in.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate it. I mean, you know, I'm sure, you know, we can get people to haul them out there if we need to. I seem to be spending every Saturday out there.
So, so my question is, what percentage of kids in middle school athletics who want to participate are able to participate?
Don't have that number, but I can certainly get it for you.
And, and part of that is just that athletics are really, really important and for some people, they're going to get very skillful and develop a whole lot, but athletics is also hugely important for people's well-being. And so the more kids that can be involved, particularly at middle school level, which is so hard, I just want to make sure that it doesn't become something that most children can't be a part of in some form or fashion.
And we'll include that as part of our assessment with transportation and everything.
But seriously, making sure that kids can be a part of something even, even if they're the person who gets picked last over and over, it'd be great if they could be part of sports.
Board member Parker?
Do we still offer intramurals at middle school?
We do, yes. And that's one of the things we need to, we, we provide them with fun, funding, but we don't have much involvement in that. It's more of a PE kind of thing, but we need to work with them in connection to build, to grow that program as well. Figure out how to incorporate that during the calendar, during the day and the calendar year so that we can get more kids involved, but yes.
I think that's an important way for children to experience lots of different sports so that then they, if they are so led, they can, can go in the direction that they want to. So I think that is as important for us to continue that intramurals program at middle school because we don't have all those opportunities at high school and everybody can't make a team, so.
Totally agree.
I, I will just interject. I was at the North Carolina School Board Association Conference for the last couple of days and I attended several different sessions about other things, but it, all three of them came back to athletics and the importance of fully funding our athletic programs. Of course, there are always needs, there will always be needs in the schools, but this is something that we need to keep at the top of the list because, because with our students in athletics, it offers more than just physical activity, it offers mentoring. They were talking about, you take a student who might be a D student, well, you let them be involved in athletics, they will be a C student. You take a B student, they will be an A student. It just does so, so much for their lives and I'm just so glad that we're offering and that we're working on the middle school athletics to give them that opportunity that when they do go to high school, they can be competitive in those sports and then beyond. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do we have any idea around, you know, the one big one we talked about and was that we don't offer middle school football and all of our larger districts do? Because it does take a great deal of funding to, to put any of these sports together. Do we have, do we have a pathway that we see where that might happen or?
That's one of the reasons we need to do the facility assessment is we don't have the facility infrastructure to just edit if we had the money.
And so will the, that piece of it, that part of the assessment, will that be in the overall building assessment that the district's paying for, the facility audit? So it will show up in that? Okay, great. All right. And because even without, you know, I gotta have to give a plug for the East Forsyth Eagles who are still in the hunt for the state championship. Sorry, Shay. But I could say go Carver too for you. So even without having a program that's doing that, we, we've been very successful as a district, but again, I think it's so much more of what Leah reminds us of is that mentoring, that sense of belonging that, that we need to start out early. And so, okay, so I guess we'll stay tuned. We'll read the paper and see what happens after the facilities.
I have one question. Do we have an estimate on what it would cost to bring middle school football back as far as equipment goes? Helmets, pads?
I can get that for you. I've, I asked for numbers a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yes, I can get you that. It may change slightly because of pricing, but it'll be close enough.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Lauren Richards, our chief operations officer, will present the custodial contract agreement.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry about that.
Next, Jonathan Wilson, our chief safety, security, and emergency management officer, will give us a school safety, security, and emergency management update. Sorry about that.
Jonathan, before you start, before you start, very quickly, I just wanted to set the stage for something really quickly and then I'll turn it back over to Jonathan. Last week, we met with the superintendent advisory and, and this is, this is relevant because we just talked about the connection that you get through sports and you get mentorship and all of that support. And it's really about connection to something that gives you purpose and excite, you're excited about. We met with our 59 students. Dr. Stokes is in the room. She was, I don't see if any, Dr. Wilson. And what we were excited about, their first activity was, tell us what you're excited about this year at your schools. And many of them, and this is one of our goals this year, and many of them talked about the addition of new student clubs, the addition of more opportunity for student voice, the addition, the, the, the more things like SEL, they talked about the social emotional curriculum, time for them to do. So all the things that we have talked about, which are what we know lead to kids being connected, it's not just athletics, it's all these other things. Our goal is for every single one of our students to be connected to something outside of their academic program, something that they're excited about being at school. We know that, all the mentoring, all that is all the preventative side. Tonight's presentation is not about all the preventative. We've done many presentations about everything that would prevent us from having incidents in our schools, but I wanted to tell you that because it's connected to the conversation about athletics, is that our kids were saying these things that are happening in their schools and we were, were we not very excited about that because we have a lot more work to do, but we are there. So tonight's presentation was requested by the board to an update on the grants we've gotten, the cameras, the security measures. It's more around the security, not on the preventative side. I wanted to make sure that, that everyone's aware about that. Thank you.
So with that, I'll say, good evening Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, and board. And before I jump in, I want to say personally, thanks for everything you've done for the past four years. You have served in a, in a very challenging times, even things that happened within our schools over the past four years. And so I just want to say it's been an honor to serve beside you for the past four years. So as Ms. McManus said, I've been asked to give a security update, but I want to begin with, sorry, begin with one of the most visible things that you'll see with the, with our security in Winston-Salem South County Schools and this, the new expanded safety, security, and emergency management team. So you'll see here on the screen, so we have seven of us now, I think, chief, safety, security, emergency management officer, that's myself. And basically, I'm over the oversight, the planning, the management, the budgeting, and incident management in an incident that were happening on our campuses. We have a director of security. His role is to work on the daily operations with the SRO program, the night security, traffic control. I'm happy to hand off traffic control to Cedric. Two campus security managers and they work in direct support with our schools to develop teams, things that may, the schools need and plans on a school-specific site. We have a director of security technologies that works on our cameras, our door access controls, our visitor management systems. Everything that the bond and the grants and everything that you guys have approved for the past four years is in place, works on those. Safe, and safety and emergency management coordinator keeps our operations center running, monitoring, gathers tips and gathers data for us as we move forward. And our security administrative assistant who does our payrolls, our POs, our work orders, and calls and correspondence and things like that. So if you'll just bear with me for a second, I know Tricia showed you this slide, but this is a picture of our team and I just want to tell you a little about, about each one of them. And so disindulge me because I've not had a chance to introduce you to them or to the community yet. So starting from left to right, we'll go with Evelyn Foster. Evelyn Foster's homegrown. She graduated from Aggins High School. She spent time working in Winston-Salem State University for traffic control, so she knows a lot about traffic as well. And she also came to us working from Navant Health and so she's used to that campus-style stuff, just like we do with our schools. Each campus is a little bit different. Veronica, I stole Veronica from Dion, Dion's office, Dion's still a little bitter about it, but Veronica's very organized and so she keeps me on track, keeps our team on track and gathers the data and gives us things we need. The guy in the pink shirt here is myself. I'm homegrown as well. I'm working on 30 years on my career. I spent 24 years working for the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, lucky enough to come in 2016 to the school district. It's been the best years of my career, so I'm going to continue my 30 years on a little bit longer as long as Tricia will have me. Cedric Collins, Cedric came to us from Washington State before he moved with his grandchildren after COVID, but his career honestly is funny when we look down, his career is a lot like mine. Spent 27 years in law enforcement, came, went to work for the fourth largest, no, second largest school district in Washington State as a security director. And so he spent time as an SRO and a supervisor in the police department, so he's aware of law enforcement and things like that. Brent Cook has been with you since the beginning of the 2016 bond and so every camera, door access control, visitor management system, everything that we've touched, he's been a part of and he's got a lot of knowledge, so he knows the systems intimately. Teresa's not with us tonight, but she has been with the school system. She worked in purchasing and for finance and then she worked in technology and now she came to work for the safety department. And then Phillip here, our small guy, he is, he most recently taught in a school in Chesapeake area of Virginia, right? Teaching welding in a maritime academy. And then he also spent time in the military, so he has a lot of military experience, particularly around base security. So we have a strong security team. So where did our money come from? Thank you. So our, we'll tell you where our money came from for the past little bit. So thanks to the voters in 2016, we got a bond for $3.5 billion. That bond paid for surveillance cameras on every school campus in the district and to give access control in middle schools. That set the ground for the thing. in middle schools. That set the ground for the things that we did moving forward. In 2019, we got a school safety grant for $300,000, and we took out those old A phones that were on the front doors of schools and put the new two-end devices. So I hope each one of you have seen those. You've all pushed the button. You've probably been asked who you are, and they can see and let you in the door. So we took those off. We put the new two-end access devices in place to mimic what we did in our middle schools, and then we also did our door access controls. We found that doors, kitchen doors, are weak points, so we fixed those as well. 2021 bond, we got $320,000, and so that was for the two walkthrough metal detectors that we talked about in the earlier meeting tonight at all of our middle and high schools, administrative sites, standalone arts and athletic facilities. We have 73 metal detectors that we own. Some districts are renting these devices in some way. We own them. We can use them. We can move them around for different places. We bought additional AEDs across our district. So each, we bought 95. Each school will get an additional AED and some other ones across the district in different administrative locations. And then I love you guys. John Michael Keys came in and taught us, after he lost his daughter in Platte Canyon shooting, about how we can improve our messaging around a crisis. And so that was a great training day. And then also, just with state funds, we have updated all of our high schools. Our high school doors now are all secured, and our back doors at our high schools are secured the same way that we did in our middle schools. We just were awarded in the past two weeks $747,000 to expand our elementary schools' access control. So the same things that we did at our middle schools and our high schools on the back doors between two separate buildings for students to enter their ID or staff to badge in and out, we're going to be able to do that. We're going to touch 31 schools. All 31 schools, all 43 elementary schools don't need it because they don't have additional buildings, but those that do, and that's been something that elementary school teachers and staff have looked for and wanted for a long time. So we're going to be able to do that now. Card readers, we're going to go back and replace those at the front door of our middle and elementary schools. We did not do that at the time. We were trying to save money. We want to get our foot in the door and get started on this. So now with this grant, we'll be able to come back and put card readers at the front doors. Additional cameras for elementary schools. If you've ever walked around an elementary school, those have the least amount of cameras because we have the least amount of behavioral issues, but we also have the littlest kids, and we need to be able to see what's going on outside. So we're going to get more cameras around the elementary schools, and that should, we got to work with Special Children's School and Children's Center, since we don't own those two structures, but within this, we think we can put cameras in those two schools as well, so those schools will be solid. And then we also have, I love you guys, coming back again for two one-day reunification training exercises that'll impact 240 staff. And so we now have the standard response protocol, standard reunification method, but we get a chance to exercise it. Not going to go through all these numbers as far as cameras, but what I do want to draw your attention to is the total number of cameras. We have 2,482 cameras in our district right now, but we have 4,200 views. We can see everything. If you step on foot on the cameras, we can see everything. And so you'll notice that the elementary school cameras went up, the middle school cameras went up. The high school cameras actually went down when we took those analog cameras out. We could go into a school like Reynolds High School that may have 150 cameras in the past, but you couldn't see anything. Add 70 cameras, and we can see a lot. And so saving money on those devices and licensing fees is beneficial. 73 of our schools now have IP camera systems. Those will be completed when Philo Hill, Kennedy, and North Forsyth are done with their new construction, and we're going to come in and upgrade some camera systems at some schools who were the first to get IP cameras. And then we have to upgrade our elementary school servers, and when we get that done, the 2016 grant is done. Access control. 16 middle schools started with access control. What we did, our front doors, we put card readers at the back doors, and we now, we're going to add card readers at the front doors as well. 43 elementary schools have access control at the front door. We're going to add it to the back door and the modular doors as well, along with card readers. 14 of our high school campuses have the devices at the front and the back door, and we're going to finish that with Kennedy and Main Street. 71 kitchen doors, nine administrative sites. So again, that number at the bottom, 271, when I came here in 2016, we had 10, and they were here and at the admin office. So we've put a lot of devices in place. In August of 2022, we adopted a standard response protocol. These five actions, hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter, will cover every event that happens on our campus. And so we use these in different ways. Something very simple could be a hold to keep students where they are. A lockdown is a more serious thing, and then we saved the nerves of the parents across the community when we stopped using the term "community lockdown" because "community lockdown" sounds just like lockdown. So this is just a picture of our training. Some of you guys were there that day. It's probably, I've been told that it was probably the best training that we've ever put on in the school district, and nobody there that at least came to me and said, "I don't want to do that again." Most of them said, "Let's do it again." So we're going to do it again. All of our schools have visitor management systems. We can put folks on no-go lists. Sex offender screening before someone comes to our door. We use volunteer management, and we can, in the past, we've just been able to run school-specific, but now with this enterprise system we have, we can run district reports to see who's in any particular school at any given time, how many visitors a school may have, how many times we turn a sex offender away, and it happens more than you would, more than you probably think. Identification and visitor protocols. We've talked about this for years. This is an important piece of equipment. It looks kind of not very scary or nothing big deal, but it's important that we have this around our neck so that you know if I'm walking down the hall, you know who I am. And then if I don't have this on, I should have a visitor management identikit sticker on. So again, we just have to continue to ask questions, be courteous, but don't let, don't let that courtesy get in the way. And then the last three words on this slide is doors remain locked. We have reemphasized the importance of keeping every door in this district locked, whether it's an outside door or whether it's a classroom door. Even if that classroom door is open, it should be locked so that if the need being, you shut the door, it's closed, and then you don't have to worry about whether it's locked or not. So doors remain locked. We have great policies and procedures, I think. We have an in-depth emergency procedure manual. You've all seen that orange book that sits on shelves. No one ever reads. Brushed the dust off of it because it's so big, but we turned that into a safety and security handbook that's easy to read, and we also put that on a crisis manager app so someone can get to it quickly. We have detailed response and lockdown procedures that we practice each month, each semester with the SRP, Standard Response Protocol. We also have school safety teams at each and every school. We have CERT plans. These two campus security managers, along with Cedric, worked on CERT plans throughout the summer to make sure before we, Dr. Pratt said, "We can't come back to school, can't start school until the CERT plans are done." So we got them done. Every school has a CERT plan. And then we have four different teams on the district level for any response that we may need. One is a critical incident response team. That means some of these folks on the front row will be responding to the scene in case something were to happen. Others in this room, particularly those sitting on that side of the room, would go to the critical incident management team and go to the EOC. We have a district reunification support team that goes to a reunification site, and then we also have the student care, student family care response team. It's overseen by Dr. Stokes and her team to put the pieces back together when something happens. We have 560-plus folks that are notified. Anytime something happens across our district, if it's a lockdown, a secure or an evacuation, we don't notify these folks if there's something as simple as a hold or a shelter in place, because those happen. But if it's a big event, we notify these folks. You've talked about the maps before in the past. We partnered with Matt Forsyth with Emergency Management and developed critical incident pre-planning maps so that we know where we're going to close roads, where we're going to land helicopters, where we're going to house kids, where we're going to put the media. All this is done ahead of time so that we don't have to think about it when incidents happen. Training for our staff and students yearly, before the first five days of school are over, teachers, and I know they love it because I see on the advocacy page when I put it out there, they say, "Oh, it's video time again." So the standard response protocol videos that they watch this year, and the void-deny defend videos so that they know what to do in case something happens. Practice the lockdown drills at least twice a year, once each semester. Practice the secure protocol drills once each semester. And that's just giving you that muscle memory so that when something happens and you can't remember what you're supposed to do, the more you do it, the easier it is to do it. And then we have a monthly drill schedule to take care of fire and tornado and lockdowns and things like that. The crisis manager app, I spoke about it a few minutes ago, but it's important. All principals, APs, SROs, athletic directors, first responders have this on their phone so that they can pull it up, and it gives you our plans, gives you access to the maps, it gives you access on who to call. Again, so that this is much easier than to mess with that big orange book that no one's going to look at. Partnership with law enforcement. Our partnerships right now are with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, Curranville Police Department, and North State Company Police. Each one of these agencies has officers that are designated just to our schools. These officers are not going to respond to a robbery down the street, not going to respond to a high-speed chase that they might hear about and want to go after. These are to our schools. And our security team, each one of these folks here on the front row are in constant communication with law enforcement throughout the day, probably more than we would like and probably more than they like, but we talk a lot and share intelligence. They also provide our athletic and our events security. We have our SRO program where we have 39 officers from the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, 39 deputies from the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, and eight officers from the Curranville Police Department that serve our schools. The 25 and four that you see on the first row are assigned to specific schools. The second row, the 14 and the four are roving officers or supervisory staff that would support schools. So you can move an officer if you had an incident at one school and you don't need him so much at the next, you're still going to keep the one there, but you can enhance and beef up your force at the other school. And then schools that do not have law enforcement, SROs on their campus, need to call 911 or the non-emergency number for help, and we still partner with the Winston-Sonoma Police Department. The Winston-Sonoma Police Department still talks to us on a daily basis to give us information about what's happening at night and on the weekends so that when we come back to school, we know what's happening. We investigate all potential threats. We get threats every day, whether it's social media threats, whether it's a note written on a piece of paper, whether it's a mom that saw something on Instagram. We get notified of those, and we investigate all of them along with our law enforcement partners 24 hours a day, seven days a week, until we know that the threat does not exist or has been handled. We have the Bully Patrol and tip line. Bully Patrol and tip line typically right now is more focused on elementary school because of what I'm going to tell you next, but it's still accessible for all school students and staff members or anybody in the community that wants to tell us something by email, by text, by internet, by the app. And just to kind of give you an example, in 2022, we had, this year to date, we've had 139 tips from the Bully Patrol tip line. In 2021, we had 370. In 2020, we had 218. So people are giving us those tips. In middle and high schools, in 2022, we adopted the Say Something Anonymous Reporting App, and since inception, we've had 381 tips to come in to that line, and so we've addressed each one of those tips. And those tips are categorized as life safety or non-life safety when they're triaged. We still have our night patrol services with the North State Company Police. They provide our patrol of our campuses at night. It's really important. They do board security. They do event security. If a principal needs something at their building at night because they forgot, those guys will go out. They help us patrol the roads during weather events. And so North State does a lot of work for us within our nighttime hours. And just wrapping it up here, we continually revisit our procedures. We are always planning, reevaluating, doing after-action reports. When something happens, we have a lockdown. If something happens and we had an incident at a school, we talk about it. What can we do better? What can we improve on? And we do these things, our drills, we do our tabletop exercises in order to get better at what we do. Additionally, we have crowd managers for all events, over 1,000 people. That's required by fire code, but it's important that if something happens in a stadium full of football fans and something happens, then somebody stands up as a crowd manager and says, "Everybody stay calm. This is the exit. We're going to take you into the gym. We're going to take you to a different location. Everybody stay put. There's something going on in the parking lot." That's the crowd manager's job. We have handheld and walkthrough metal detectors. We use those for administrative searches, athletic, extracurricular activity, extracurricular events, and we use them for threats as needed. And so we're not just going to roll the metal detectors out. I mean, there's times we may use them randomly just to exercise what we need to know to work and to kind of just keep everybody on their toes, but we would use them if there was a threat. Automated external defibrillators on every campus and Stop the Bleed kits. I will tell you, if you want to make a donation, we're looking for some more Stop the Bleed kits. These were donated some years ago by Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center, and there still were. They're fine, but we need to replenish those. And so I know hospitals donate those to the public. And then finally, we want to be thoughtful in our approach. I can tell you, every time an event happens across the country, whether it was something that happened in Virginia last night or whether it happened in Uvalde, someone vendors just blow us up, you know, trying to sell us these gadgets. Gadgets are good, some of them. Maybe some gadgets are not as good, but we want to be smart. A locked door is just as good and more effective than a device to put in the door to keep it locked. There's never been a situation where a locked door was breached by a gunman. So using the things that are in place that already are proven is important. And then if we do look at a new solution, can, does it improve our current position, and is it something that we can sustain? So I'm really, really proud of the work that this team does. I'm really, really proud to be here. I'm happy to be here, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have. Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment. What you and your team have developed over the years that I've been on the board is extraordinary. It really takes so much focus and dedication. I know when I first got on the board in 2006, we didn't have security at board meetings. We didn't have any of these things in place, and what's happened is phenomenal. And I'm, as somebody who loves all of the soft stuff, I'm also extremely grateful for you and your team and for everybody in our district who also pays attention to the hard stuff. So just thank you so much for the work you've done.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the words. And I will say that any one of these pieces by themselves won't work. It takes it all, and it takes your soft stuff just as well.
Right. No, but it's the whole comprehensive look and the endless screening for, is there a way of making this better? And the fact that, yes, you indeed do work so well with the soft stuff, with the interpersonal stuff. And so I just wanted to say how much I appreciate you and all of your team for what you're doing to keep our schools safe.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Board member Woodbury.
Thank you. I just wanted to definitely thank this safety team that's directly under the leadership of Dr. Pratt. I can tell this community, I have called him during hours after hours about safety and security, and he takes it very seriously and really listens to the concerns of board members around securing this district, especially when we are here in this room, holding business meetings to, you know, make sure we have a great school district. And this team is definitely, you know, an evolution, just like board member Mott Singer has said. When I got on the board, we just had Jonathan Wilson, and now we have, you know, a great team of people, and I think our staff and our schools will feel that much more comfortable learning in buildings that now, you know, there is, you know, what we can't hide from our children, that, you know, sometimes there are issues that have grave consequences. And to know that our district has put together a team like this and just so many different protocols, I just thank this team and of course, the support that comes throughout our community from the different police departments and the sheriff department to make sure that our schools and facilities are safe. I guess the question that I have, Jonathan, is about the bullying piece and how we are connecting better with middle and high school kids to have technical access to report any bullying concerns.
So, well, I can say that that was the one part of the Say Something Anonymous Supporting App is that it had, you know, it gave you different ways to get to it. So they could report on their device, by internet, on the Chromebook. If they have their own phone, they can do it that way, or they can make a phone call. You know, as far as having additional ways, I don't know. I mean, Dr. Stokes and I worked together as far as looking at, you know, how do we address certain issues with bullying and how to answer some of those things.
Dr. Stokes, so Mr. Wilson, do we know how many middle and high school kids that have actually kind of downloaded the what's the Say Something app?
Yep. I don't, I don't, can we get that number? I know that at the beginning of school, when we first did this last year, every school did an assembly where they taught it, and that should be taking place again. Was there, there was a deadline coming up on that, so that would be revisited once again in some, either in some, either a classroom or an assembly to make sure that students knew, along with signage and putting it as many places as Brent Campbell would let us place it.
Yeah. I thought there was a way to account for the students that were downloading it to their device by way of a simple ask or something that they said that they had done it.
We definitely can ask that. Veronica's saying, we can ask that, and I can provide that back to you. I just don't know it right now. I can tell you how many tips we've had, I don't know how many downloads you've had.
So Jonathan, I just wanted to, again, just to echo my colleagues' comments about your team and very grateful for all of you all's work. And I also wanted to just echo your comments about the "I love you guys" training. So I normally am fatigued at the end of an all-day, eight-hour training, but I was, I actually left feeling like it was a really fantastic use of my time. I learned a tremendous amount. And also, I think that it's important to acknowledge that the work of the district and the work that you're leading is actually, you are leading the way in this county because a lot of our law enforcement agencies are adopting the standard response protocol after we made a decision as a district to do that. And so I think that you and your team should be acknowledged for that. The question I did have is around the additional training that you mentioned, and what is that going to consist of?
So the two days of reunification training, so we have now reunification plans, and we're going to do, so each school could do a reunification on a school level. But if you remember what John Michael Key said, you know, we should probably do it on a district level and so the schools could take care of their students, and that's what our plans are. So we have five current locations that we're working to develop plans to do reunification at those sites. And so when "I love you guys" comes in to do it, we will probably pick two of those, two different sites, do it on one day, do it on another day, and the teams that we have put together, with the four teams I named, along with a greater, larger reunification team that would have to do the actual work, would come out to train on those days. And so I'm anxious to see what it looks like as well. Everybody that I've heard that's ever gone through it, you know, it's hands-on. Everything that we learned that day, it was taking it all in emotionally, but now we get to put it in place. It's a functional exercise. Yes, sir.
Marilyn?
I'll echo your thanks from everyone else, and I'd also just like to thank you and your team for all the grants that you apply for. I think a lot of these things that we have here in our district, we would not have if you guys were not proactive and you looked, searched high and wide for lots of grants. And I think that's one reason we are so blessed with so many things in this district to keep our children and our teachers and staff and everyone safe. So thank you all for that, and keep hunting those grants so we can get more free money.
So I want to get, with that, I also want to give a little plug to Andy Craft and his team with Victoria Fulton and Latandra Baldwin, who actually, we give the ideas and then they actually do it, because we don't write that well.
That's okay. You're not expected to in your field, so no, but that's great. But you guys do the, but continue to look for those things, because, and we are blessed to have those folks too. Grants are, they are worth their weight in gold, the people who write grants, so, yeah, thanks.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, will present the custodial contract agreement.
All right. Good evening again, Board Chair Ms. McManus and members of the board. Echo a lot of what Jonathan had to say. Thank you for your service. Good luck to those of you that are moving on to new ventures, and I look forward to continuing to work with those of you that are staying. So to give you a brief overview of our custodial services, we have had contracted custodial services since 2011. We've had fifty-six sites contracted during that time, and since 2020, we have extended the current contracts three times to try to continue our services through COVID and many other things that were occurring. And so it was time for us to put a new bid out and solicit services. And so in this bid, we have forty-five schools and twelve of our district office buildings on this bid. And to give you an overview of what an RFP process looks like, we put out a bid to solicit vendors for custodial services. We held a pre-bid meeting, so that was mandatory, so that we could get an idea of the companies that were interested in business and have some dialogue around the services we expected. We had fourteen contractors show up to the pre-bid meeting, which is an outstanding number. Of those fourteen, we had seven contractors submit bids for our review. We had a committee comprised of principals, assistant principals, operations staff members, and our finance office on that committee. And of those seven bids, we elected to take interviews with four of those companies to learn more about their submittal and ask some more clarifying questions. And so of those four bids that were submitted, we made one selection that we felt was the best option for Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, and that vendor is SSC Services for Education. And so the primary reasons that this bid was selected was because SSC specializes in K-12 services, not just custodial, many other facility-related services, but custodial is definitely one of their strong suits. They offer competitive wages for staff ranging from fifteen dollars and up, which matches our current minimum wage as well. They offered five zone managers to support our schools throughout the district so that there's good oversight and good communication constantly to maintain services. They have industry standards for cleaning of K-12 facilities, and so APA is an industry standard for educational leadership in facilities. And so it is a very specific list that says, if you do these things, this is what it takes to maintain a school building for it to be an appropriate level for our students to have a good learning environment. One of the biggest things that set SSC apart was their local MWBE program called Grow Local, which I'll talk about in just a moment. And so this contract for 2022, 2023 was seven point four million. There is an increase in this contract, and so for the remainder of this fiscal year, we're looking at an increase of nine hundred thousand. So the Grow Local MWBE program that I mentioned a moment ago is SSC's program to help support local minority and women-owned businesses. A lot of times with our vendors and our contractors, we see them using suppliers of equipment and consumable items that are minority-owned, but not always working alongside one of those vendors. And so what's very unique about this program is that they're going to work side by side and select a local MWBE business owner or someone that is trying to seek their MWBE certification. That is a lengthy process. They're going to work with them to help them obtain that certification. They're going to work in our school buildings along with SSC, with the support for capital funds to provide equipment, to support their employees through payroll, and to help grow that business so that that local business owner can futuristically solicit and go out and seek other larger bids in the community and continue to grow here locally with us. And so I will pause there and take any questions that you may have.
You did a great job answering questions during our committee meeting.
Thank you.
I just wanted you to reiterate, you know, the response that you gave as it relates to my question around the disruption of our current staff. I think folk from the community have, you know, addressed concerns around, will they have displacement of, you know, key folk that's in their building that helped with the management of our building? So I just wanted you to kind of respond to that.
Absolutely. And that actually reminds me, there was a comment during, public comment that I can also address along with that. So for our current contractors, we will be working with them through the transition process. It is our hope that every single one of their employees knows that if they choose to stay with Winston-Salem Forsyth County School, they have that opportunity and can do so. I also know that those vendors will also support their employees by seeking employment for them in other accounts, and so there will be continued support from many avenues for those individuals. We hope that many of them will stay with us. A number of them do an outstanding job, and we know our schools appreciate them, and so they do have a home here. The comment that was mentioned earlier was in reference to a thirty-dollar-an-hour overtime cost. And so for any of our in-house employees that work overtime hours, they receive time and a half at their assigned pay rate, and that's different for every single individual employee. We use compensatory time in-house for that often. And so on the contractor's side, it is much the same. And so if an employee is paid at fifteen dollars an hour and they work more than forty hours in a set week, whatever their week runs through, they will be paid at their rate at a time and a half rate. That thirty dollars an hour that you see in the contract is for outside-of-the-scope work. So if we were, for example, to say, we need you to pressure wash all of the sidewalks at a specific elementary school, that's not in the scope. That's an extra project, but that may be a project that they can complete. If we asked them to do that, that bill rate would be at thirty dollars an hour. Yes, ma'am?
Anybody?
I'm an MWBE business.
Yes, ma'am.
And have been for thirty-five years. So the only thing that I'm saying is, I want to make sure that when we are supporting this, that we are honest to God supporting MWBE businesses.
Yes.
Because unfortunately, in, like everything, you know, there are a lot of fronts out there.
Absolutely.
And it needs to be someone that is an honest-to-God, true MWBE business.
Yes, and so they are contractually obligated to support that in the first year. It will take some time to get that off the ground, but we will be communicating with them very regularly through our transition process and as they set that program up, for them to give us regular reports. And they'll also be doing monthly and quarterly reviews, and so we'll always get to see the amount that's contributing to that MWBE business. So it'll be very transparent. I'm excited about that.
Great.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the school improvement plan review. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Vogue Tower option and lease agreement at Clemens Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of Brunson Elementary School Gilbane Demolition GMP. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Mr. Walker, I don't see Nick here, so I have just a couple of questions for you. When we first looked at the different ideas for Brunson, we considered building on the site, is that correct?
On the current site?
Yes.
We did. It was one of nineteen that we evaluated.
And the issue with building on the site was that it was cost prohibitive, is that correct?
That was, yeah, the numbers we ran, we had to bring in so much field to build it up and put all the parking under the building, if you may recall that plan.
Right.
So it made it kind of cost.
I think at the time, it was significantly higher than some of our other options, maybe I think like a difference of like ten million dollars, something like that.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I had a question. So I will admit that going through this process, it can be kind of confusing at times as it relates to where are we in the process of being, fulfilling the Brownsville site requirements and doing what we need to do in a safe and responsible way. And I just really want to thank Mr. Antonelli, I hope I'm saying your name right, Antonazi, thank you, for his continued advocacy around making sure that we're doing things in a, you know, in a safe way, because children will be in these buildings and, of course, our staff. So I just want to make sure that it's clear to the public where we are with the Brownsville requirement and making sure that we move forward, we have built it on this site with support of all of the necessary elements that the state require for us to be considered Brownsville.
Yes, ma'am. And so one of the things we're actually doing right now is working with Andy's team on a grant to assist us with the cleanup of the Brownsville location. We have certain areas within the site to clean. They're not anything overwhelming or very, very large locations within the site, but we are working on that, and that will finalize. We'll also have underground systems and all this on this building as well as we move forward. So all the kind of checks and balances should be in place.
One last question. So if we demolish whatever we have to demolish and abate the other, and if something comes back where it is not feasible for us to move forward, we just have to have incurred the cost, and I agree, you can't put a price on, well, just because we've invested so much, if it's not safe, we just can't move forward. What's the likelihood of something like that happening?
Very rare. We've done all the testing on the ground materials already. I mean, there was some, there is some asbestos and things that are in the current building of the Thomasville site that will be taken down, but that's an abatement process that we do every day, a lot of times anyway, so it should be pretty clear and clean moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just that we have had extensive conversations about this site over more times than just in the public board meetings when we're taking final votes, but that we have had really extensive questioning by the board before we voted to begin with this site.
Okay, thanks. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the resolution for environmental sustainability.
Move to approve.
Second?
Any discussion?
Just that this is really a very important thing for our district and for our community and for our children in most particular, and it's a real belief in their future.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say I appreciate the work that's gone into that. And again, I think, as I said at the committee meeting, it, you know, the resolution definitely says we should look at these areas, and hopefully that will be looked at with a good common sense lens as well and a financial sense, that there are, there are things that, you know, might be easier to start doing. You know, I know that, you know, Leah and Deanna worked themselves with compostable trays, you know, putting them in barrels and all of that before the world shut down. You know, so again, I appreciate the work that's gone into it, but I hope that the district and those who are here, you know, really use a good common sense approach in how we do this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the synergistic energy reduction contract. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just, I have a question. That on page two, it talks about giving master keys and alarm codes to these employees, and it would be done within thirty days with the support of the synergistic administrative guidelines for the program. It talks about giving network access, a district email address, master building keys, parking access, and alarm codes. So for those folks, will they be accessing the buildings and things like that without district staff? And then for those folks, will they be identified and go through our background check?
They will. So we will have, we will have a part in the hiring of those individuals to make sure that we like them, we're comfortable, and they're compatible with our team. And so when we issue those keys and codes, they will be able to complete energy audits at all various hours, because we'll be looking to see if our control systems are working when we're not there on weekends, if lights are on, all those different things that we don't see that we could shut down when we're not there. And so we will do all of those background checks to make sure that they meet all the standards of our current employees and have identification.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have one other question. I know that when we're looking at savings, is that, what is the comparison? Are we going back to like the five years of what our energy costs are, just because it's been very different because of COVID? And I just want to make sure that, and I'm counting on us to realize all these savings. I'm counting on this to be an excellent thing for our district and a wonderful learning process in every school. I just want to make sure we're not giving away any of our resources because our energy was higher during COVID.
Absolutely. So when we started this venture, we were asked to provide our utility data, and so we specifically gave data from eighteen nineteen prior to us running our systems in overtime for COVID, because we knew that we were operating at a much higher rate for a specific situation. And so that is the data that we gave and the data that was used to comprise And so that is the data that we gave and the data that was used to comprise these numbers. Our monthly energy bills run about $900,000. And so with the increases that we're expecting, this is, these are pretty reasonable fees. And I think it speaks a little bit to, you don't want to overpromise and underperform, right?
Right.
And so these numbers are, are very fair and we hope to even outperform them.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do I have a motion? I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next is to consider the approval of the elementary perimeter fencing. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the retention bonus. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Third, fourth. Any, any discussion? Okay. All in favor? That is unanimous. That's great. Consider approval of the professional development contracts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the custodial contract. Do I have a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just, I have a question I forgot to ask earlier, but I think the difference in the next six months is about $900,000. Will that be coming out of fund balance or are we going to find it somewhere else?
It'll be coming out of local fund.
Okay. Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of facilities advisory appointment. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second. Who is the?
Discussion?
Guy Curry. It's in with him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to?
I just thought we could say it.
Yeah. It's Guy Curry to replace Stan L. Rod on the facilities committee.
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider approval of the general personnel report?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Our next order of business is announcements. Tuesday, December 6, 2022 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. And before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable 2.
Chair Kaplan, can I say one thing?
Of course.
Okay. Sorry. I failed to acknowledge someone in my comments that I do as well want to thank and that is our superintendent, Ms. McManus. She's very passionate about, about education and about children, making the gains that they, they can and being the best that they can be. And I appreciate her passion and if she could, if she, if, if, I think if her passion were able to be in every child, we would be way above our reading goal before, before we get there. So I just, I was remiss in my comments, but thank you.
And I would like to certainly second that and to just acknowledge December 6 is a group of new people getting sworn in. And all I can say to you is, we have a wonderful superintendent. We have an extraordinary team in this district and please come in and show them the love and respect they so richly deserve. You are really fortunate to be able to become a school board member in this district and I know my fellow board members join me in wishing you all success.
Thank you. Before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, good night. Thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.[1759.63]